Correspondents.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The advertisement.
Yeah, no, we did receive any of the correspondence.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we are reporting to the crowd.
Okay, you all ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then I'd like to call to order tonight's meeting of the Gardner zoning Board of Appeals. Today is July 7th, 2020. I will read the agenda for the first item. A date, July 7th, 2020, time, 6:00 PM, location via Zoom. As an announcement, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, operation of equipment so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recording shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents referenced or used during the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the clerk. All documents shall become part of the official record of the meeting. I'll ask the question, is anybody or is anyone going to make a recording, et cetera, of this meeting? I'll take that as a note. The agenda for this evening. Participate via Zoom. HTTPS colon backslash backslash zoom dot US backslash J dot slot backslash nine six eight seven four six three two eight nine five. The public hearings for this evening will be case number 2020 dash oh three oh one. Type special permit, address request. 102 Vernon Street, add apartment units. Second case, 2020 zero dash three dash oh two administrative appeal. Four ninety seven five oh five Chestnut Street backslash open smoke bar. Uh, there is an asterisk on each of the two cases that I mentioned, and the asterisk is for extended from March seventeenth meeting COVID nineteen cancellation. Mail or e-mail in or email questions, comments will be accepted at the above address until July 3rd, since we're past that. Uh, and it's been noted that nothing has arrived. Then we'll just move forward. The meeting plat- platform will be open fifteen minutes prior to the start time to allow all attendees to sign in. All attendees must, will be muted entering, but will be able to communicate with the host by raising your hand. We will be unmuting periodically for questions throughout the meeting. Should you be dialing in via phone, use this features. Use features are star nine to raise your hand, star six to mute or unmute your line. The meeting will be livestreamed via YouTube. The listing of agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the chairman, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed in fact may be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for the discussion of the extent permitted by law. Signed Raymond F. LaFawn, Chairman, Zoning Board of Appeals. Now, before we get into hearing, I'm gonna go over some of the ground rules and familiarize you with the ground rules we use as we conduct a legal meeting. In pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC three thirty A comma paragraph twenty, and the governor's March fifteenth, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Gardner City, Gardner Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted via remote particip- participation and on the city's YouTube channel. The audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings will be posted to the city's website as soon as possible after the meeting. Since this meeting is being, is being conducted via Zoom, all votes taken will be by roll call and all part- participants to raise their hands to be recognized. In Gardner, three members of the zoning board of appeals must be present to conduct the legal hearing. Applications will normally be heard in the sequence in which they appear in the public notice. The board is under no obligation to adhere to this sequence. All hearings shall be open to the public and no person shall be excluded unless he or she is considered to be a hindrance to the workings of the board. An applicant may appear in his or her own behalf or be represented by agent or attorney. The applicant or his or her representative shall present the case to the board. Representatives of the city shall be heard. The abutters to the property present shall be heard. Those in opposition to the application shall be heard. Members of the board who are hearing the case may direct appropriate questions anytime during the hearing. Due to the meeting being held remotely, we ask that the questions be held until prompted, and should have you, should you have a question, please raise your hand to the screen. Phone in attendees will be asked periodically if they have any questions. At certain times, we may mute your mic so as to clearly hear who is speaking. We ask for patience when you, when a question arises, so we may respond accordingly. The board must render, render its decision regarding variance request within one hundred days after the application was duly filed in the office of city clerk. The board regarding special permits must conduct a public hearing within sixty-five days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. The board must render its decision regarding special permits within ninety days after the closing of the public hearing. All board members, all three members of the board must vote in favor of the variance or special permit for it to be granted and approved. The right to appeal the decision of the board is provided for in the zoning act. More information can be found online on the chapter forty A, section seventeen, under mass general law. No variance or special permit or extension, modification, or renewal thereof shall take effect until notification from the city clerk that twenty days have elapsed after the decision has been filed in that office, and no appeals have been filed and is recorded in the registry of deeds for the county and/or district. The burden of supporting the need for the variance of special permit rests with the applicant or representative of the applicant. The board requests that each person identify himself, herself as to name and address before addressing the board. Sitting on tonight's hearing, and I ask that you raise your hand when I call your name, on tonight's hearing will be David Antea. Okay. Um, Michael Gary. Thank you, Mike, and myself, Ray LaFawn, as Chair. This meeting will be recorded and livestreamed on YouTube. Does anyone object to this? If you do, please raise your hand. For the record, may it noted that no hands were raised, so no one is an objection. Okay, so the first case that we're going to hear tonight is 2020 dash oh three dash oh one Edward Derrick. Application to add two units to an existing six unit at 102 Vernon Street, Gardner, Mass. Parcel ID M twenty-seven dash twenty-five dash forty-five. Located in the general residential threes of the zoning district, GR three, is denied as it does not comply with chapter six seventy-five, attachment one colon one, number five of city code of Gardner. The table of uses states that your requested required, your requested requires a special permit issued by the Gardner Zoning Board of Appeals. Mister Derrick or agent or attorney, please state your case. As I stated in here, it's a special permit. There are nine conditions under a special permit, and I ask that you address for the board each of those individually as you. Excuse me, go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. George Kuritzky, I'm an attorney in West Boylston, and I represent 101 Vernon Gardner LLC, Ed- Edward Derrick.
Thank you.
Who's the owner of the property. Um, as the, as the chair noted, this is an application for special permit. Uh, the property currently has, is a uh, building with six residential dwelling units already in the building. Uh, it's located in a general residence, general district three. Um, we have multi-family, it's a pre-existing multi-family, it's privileged, but the use is no longer permitted. So in order to expand the use, we are required under the Gardner zoning bylaw to apply to the ZBA, who's the special permit granting authority, for a special permit. We seek to add two residential units, small units in the basement. One's a studio apartment and one is a one-bedroom apartment. It's in the basement, that's what the plan is. Um, Mister Derrick has done a lot of work at the property, I know of the board scene, and I know he submitted a uh, document recently to the board to outline the work he's done to the property. Um, he has recently replaced all the windows, replaced the doors, he's done all the new plumbing, he's put in new heating and new baths, new kitchens, new electric, a new fire alarm, he's prepared to sprinkle in the entire building, that's been approved by the fire department for the work to be done, and he's looking to add two units in the basement, one of which he hopes to occupy at some time. Um, that's his game, that's his hope, that's his desire for the, for the site. So, uh, I will address the, the board, as Mister Chair noted, there are several criteria. I have submitted a memorandum wi- in writing, uh, in which I've, I hopefully touch on these, these matters, but I'll touch on them briefly for the public and for the record.
Thank you.
The, uh, the first criteria requires that the proposal shall be suitably located for the neighborhood in which it is proposed and/or the entire city, and shall be compatible with neighborhood character. Existing uses and other uses permitted by right in the district. This proposal meets that criteria because the building and the use is already in place. It's a multi-family use in the district, there'll be no change to the footprint of the building, no change to the, uh, characteristics of the building, so, uh, it's, what you see there is what you're gonna see when the, when the project's done. It's an extension of the use, but it's all, all on the external, all internal, um, changes will be made. Uh, the proposal shall provide convenient and safe vehicle and pedestrian movement, this is the second criteria, within the site in relation to the adjacent streets. Again, there'll be no change in this, so oftentimes when we do these type of work, there's gonna be contemplated changes for parking or additions of parking. These are already all in place, there'll be no changes to it. So, there should be the, the, uh, current parking and pedestrian, uh, traffic patterns that exist now are going to be the same as they are, uh, if the board grants, uh, a special permit to allow to, to the two small units in the basement. The propos- number three, the proposal shall provide adequate space for off-street parking, loading and unloading of vehicles and goods, products, materials, and equipment. Uh, this is not, so, these criteria, as the board knows, uh, deal with both residential and commercial, and they're, they're, um, they deal with all special permit applications. In this case, we're dealing with the residential criteria, so we're not gonna be dealing with loading and offloading and, 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 uh, um, you know, customer, uh, delivery or deliveries and customer traffic. Uh, the parking is onsite, all of the, all of the units have sufficient parking, the property yields sufficient parking for the units, uh, with no compromise. I know that my, that Mister Derrick has submitted, uh, and it, uh, proposed parking plan outlining where, uh, the, the, the cars would park for the residents. But all, all parking is onsite. Number four, the proposal shall provide adequate and appropriate facilities and utilities for the proper rate, operation of the proposed use and the disposal of sewage, refuse, and waste products. My client is proposing this property is already serviced by municipal services, uh, water and sewer, those are gonna stay in place, there's no changes required for that. There's pretty, there is, um, already sufficient, uh, services for the facility, for the house, and the addition of the two small units will have no compromise or increase on either municipal services or to the services to the current occupants to the property. Um, the proposal will not constitute a nuisance, this is number five. The proposal will not constitute a nuisance due to air pollution or water pollution, erosion, flood, noise, odor, dust, vibration, lights, or visually offensive structures or site features. There's no signage being proposed, there's no lighting being proposed. As I said, everything is all internal, so there's gonna be no increase in noise, no increase in traffic, no increase in, in, you know, uh, dust or, uh, light pollution, uh, because there's no changes being contemplated relative to the outside of the property, all internal. Uh, criteria number six, the proposal shall not be a substantial inconvenience or hazard to abutters, vehicles, pedestrians, uh, as determined by the special permit granting authority. I'd suggest that, uh, because there's no alteration to the outside of the building, there's not gonna be, what's, what's there now, in fact, the, the work that he's done is improve the building, it looks, it looks very nice, it's a beautiful building, he's done a lot of work. Um, I don't think there'll be any, uh, eyesore to anybody, there's certainly not gonna be any increase in traffic to that compromises the, the abutters. I don't, I haven't heard from any of the abutters that they have a problem with the, with the proposal. Um, if they have, they can speak up tonight, of course, because that's the purpose of the public hearing, but, um, I don't think that there's any hazard or risk to the abutters to the property. Uh, paragraphs, uh, section seven, criteria seven, the proposal shall be in harmony with the general intent, purpose, and intent of the chapter. Because the zoning bylaw proposes special permits for the extension of, of uses, I'd suggest that this is a contemplated use, that they, that the city of Ghana reckon, recognizes that there are times when people are gonna be asked to expand these multi-family uses. That's what the purpose of this application is. Uh, this, the, the bylaw certainly contemplates this application. Uh, that's why, you know, it's, I think that the and, uh, increasing by adding two residential units, small units in the basement is consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. Um, paragraph eight, the proposal shall not have a significant, significant detriment on the city's services, the tax base or employment opportunities. I don't believe it's gonna have any incre- any detriment at all, if anything, the, the, uh, the property will be reassessed when the, when the units are added. It may actually increase the tax base. Uh, there's, uh, only, you know, one-bedroom apartments are not gonna have any, uh, significant increase on school systems or the demands of, of the municipal, you know, uh, resources. So, it's a relatively modest request with very limited or very little impact on municipal services. And lastly, there's a, uh, there's a provision that provides that it must be consistent with the city's uh, community development plan or the master plan. Uh, in the community development plan, the, the city of Ghana has published that in order to encourage infill, the Ghana's looking for, according to the, the development plan, they're looking for infill, they wanna do this work in existing structures where they are now. Um, and if we can increase the, the housing base with limited impact or limited new development, new, new building, that's, that's what they call for infill. And they say that they are looking to encourage infill development in and near the downtown. The city would exempt projects in the GR three district. That's where we are. We're looking to add two units. That is by definition the infill that they're looking for. We think we're consistent with the, uh, master plan and the, the the development, or at least the, uh, development plan for the city of Gardner. Um, happy to answer any other questions. Mister Derrick is on with us tonight. He can tell you about his use of the property and what his, what his vision is.
Okay, thank you, Mister Kuritzky, for your presentation. Um, I'm just gonna right now open it to my board members if they have any questions, Michael or David. If you have a question of Mister Kuritzky or Mister Derrick, please raise your hand so I can recognize you. David.
Mister Chairman, uh, they sent us two options for parking. I'd like to know which one they're going to use.
Thank you, David, Mister Kuritzky or Mister Derrick, uh, you may answer, but please, uh, raise your hands so I can uh, acknowledge either one of you.
I think Mister Derrick would be, Mister Derrick would be the best to answer that. Ed, can you talk about parking?
Okay, Mister Derrick, you're on.
Pretty sure one was fifteen spaces.
Roland, we got unmute him?
Not muted.
Okay. Mister Derrick? Please, uh, respond to Mister Antea's question regarding which plan you plan to use for parking.
I don't, Ed, can you hear them? Can you speak up?
Uh, he, my signal said he muted.
Ed is muted now.
Okay, Mister Derrick.
Oh, he's muted again.
Mister Chair, if I can, this is the plan that I received, I didn't know there was a second one. This is the plan that I received that identifies the parking.
Okay.
Could you, George, could you just put it closer to the camera, please?
I don't know, is that, is that getting it or no?
No.
No.
You know, that's the, um, I have a virtual background, which is horrible, and I'm sorry. Um, so, there's, there's.
Okay, let me ask you this, George. Is it the one that all the cars are to the rear of the building? Or is it the one that has cars in the front of the building?
It's all, the one that I have is all the cars in the rear of the building off of Osgood Street.
Okay. So he's not planning to use what he put down as option one?
This is what I have for the, this is what I was submitted, so this is what we're planning on, on doing. That was, uh, our preferred, um, redesign. I, I was, um, Ed, can you hear us?
He's muted.
Unmute yourself, Ed. I'm sorry, Mister Chair, to the Chair.
I know, Mister Kuritzky, I know, Mister Derrick just raised his hand, but according to my screen, he's still muted.
All right, he's off now. Ed, can you speak to this?
Nope. We still have his muted.
Through, through the Chair, um, is there a, is there a, a parking design that the board would find more favorable? Is there one that you would rather have?
David, I'll let you answer.
That, we can only vote on what you give us, we do not make decisions on parking designs. Um, so.
This is the one that I submitted, that I would provide it and I submitted, so.
Then, then we will use that as the official, um, parking design that you're gonna use.
Thank you, Mister, thank you.
All right. My next question, or Mike, did you wanna go in?
Well, I just, um, is that the one with, is that the one with the seventeen parking spaces?
No, Mike, that's, it's fifteen in the rear. Seventeen was, I think, the one in the, that had three in the front.
No, I thought there were two on the, on the side, and then five and ten in another location, all in the back.
Right, that, that was option one that they submitted. That's this one right here.
All right, so I guess Roland, is that satisfactory to you?
How many spaces are there?
I count seventeen.
The requirement would be sixteen, so if there's seventeen, then yes, it's satisfactory. I don't know if anybody's made any plans on what to do with the snow. There's only one way in and one way out of that place.
Yeah. Mike, I just want to clarify, I don't mean to interrupt Roland, but the seventeen is not the one they're using.
And, well, if it's fifteen, then it's not adequate.
I think we still have Mister Derrick is on mute. And I'm just gonna make a suggestion to the members here, because there is some question of which plan, A or B, is the actual number. Um, if we decide to view this property, then we can ask Mister Derrick to mark out the sp- the number of spaces and let us know at that point in time, because we do not need to make a decision this evening. And he can mark out which plan he wants to use and mark out the spaces for us, so we know the correct number. That's just for consideration.
Mister Chair, I would appreciate that. Uh, if, if the board would take a view, would be happy to meet up there and, and show you what the parking facilities would yield.
Yeah, I think it would save some time, and you know, we could sort of just keep going back and forth, viewing it would much be, would be much more, uh, informative for us at that point in time. So, we can schedule a meeting if, uh, the board members choose to do that. Any other questions from, uh, David?
Um, as I think Roland was mentioning, and I kinda unfortunately cut him off, is where is the snow gonna go? Because in, I think the one Mike was talking about, that plan, they show the snow going on someone else's property. And on the plot, plan that George presented, um, if the snow is put on the side, it's gonna actually block uh, two cars from being able to move. So, I was wondering, uh, like Roland, how they were gonna handle snow, because there's only one way in and one way out.
Mister Kuritzky, do you have a response to that?
I'd suggest, you know, Mister Chair, that, uh, what they have right now, I mean, they have the facilities now and things are working as it is. It wouldn't be an increase. I, I can't tell you specifically how Mister Derrick plows his, his lot, but it's gonna be largely the same as what it's doing now. The increase of two units in the, in the basement is not gonna significantly alter the, uh, parking or the snow removal. I'm sure that he can explain how he pay, how he plows it now and what he does, because with or without the, these units, it's the same issue, whether, he's, he's got six units now, right now, that he provides for, parks them and removes the snow, stores and removes the snow. So I'm sure he can explain that to you as well in the field, what goes on.
Mister Kuritzky, I'm just gonna make a suggestion here. Since we seem to, we cannot unmute Mister Derrick. Uh, if he would like to call in, and we could do it via telephone, and then he could respond to the questions?
Great. Yeah, I think he's, he's, he's right, okay. Let me call him, I'm gonna call him right now, see if I can get him to call in. Do you have a number, Mister Chair, that he can call in?
Let me go back to my sheet here. Um, I've got nine six, is it nine six eight? Seven four, no, that's the, that's the wrong number. Um, I've got, I mean, I don't have a specific phone number here, Roland, I'm gonna defer to you.
Yeah, Rachel, can you help us out with the phone number to call in? If someone needs to call in, what is the number that they use?
Is that three four one seven eight two five? As Mister Derrick is holding it up?
Yes.
I'm calling him now.
Okay.
And he didn't pick up?
Ray, while we're waiting?
Yes.
I do have another question. Um, when you were talking about city services, um, you didn't mention how the trash is removed, is there a dumpster onsite, or is it curb side pickup, or how is that done?
Okay, Mike, we'll probably have to wait for a response.
Yeah, he's on the phone, okay.
Looks like they're both communicating.
I believe when I was there, Mike, I saw a dumpster in the parking lot.
Okay.
There, there is.
I would, I would verify that through the owner, but I believe that's what I saw.
I thought that probably was, I, I've gone by the front of the house, but I, I didn't go on Osgood Street, so.
Yeah.
Question for Roland, Ray?
Well, I did.
This is pre-existing, non-conforming, I believe. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
All right. So with all the work that they've done, does, did it become conforming?
Multi-families aren't allowed in that zone, David. It's never gonna be conforming.
Okay, all right. I wasn't sure how that worked after they did all the nice work in, and around the, the house. So I didn't know if it became conforming or not.
They did a beautiful job, but it doesn't change the status.
All right, so it's still non-conforming?
That's correct.
Okay, great.
Okay, Mr. Kuritsky and Mr. Derek, I'm gonna provide you another phone number. Let's try one, nine, two, nine.
One, nine, two, nine.
Two, zero, five.
Two, zero, five.
Six, zero, nine, nine.
Six, zero, nine, nine.
Correct.
Derek, did you get that? I mean, Ed? All right, dial that in. Yeah, dial that in. Yep. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I technical, we, growing pains. We all get growing pains.
That's not a problem. We, uh.
We know it well ourselves.
We take it slowly because it's new to everybody, and we just wanna give everybody an opportunity to speak if they have the, they can do it.
And I don't.
Mr. Gene will let me know and Roland, when Mr. Derek is in. Look at Mr. Derek. Doesn't seem to be working. Roland, I also noticed in the write-up that you did inspect a number of things on site as to entrance egress. They meet code.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the fire department has inspected the systems installed, the sprinkler, et cetera?
Not the sprinkler, because it's not completed yet. The sprinkler will only be installed if this special permit is issued. But the new fire alarm was inspected by myself and the fire department.
Understand. David? Roland, need to.
There we go.
There you go.
So the way that the units are set up, you've been in, uh, in the cellar to see where they're gonna go? So they have the appropriate exits and coming in and out?
That's correct. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Derek is with us now, I believe.
He is with us, Mr. Kuritsky?
Right.
Okay. So, Mr. Derek, you've heard some of the questions. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I can barely hear you. My volume up. You?
Hang on one second. I'm gonna try to get myself on. My daughter's gonna try. Can you hear me?
Just barely. I can hear you.
How about now?
That's a little bit better. Did you put your phone on speaker?
Call you back on landline. Nope. I'm getting a lot of back up.
Yeah, it's very hard. I know Mr. Ante is having a hard time to hear.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm, I'm relatively certain that when the board does a view, if the board does a view, you'll see that the parking facilities are adequate for the site in the snow removal, because there's not gonna be any significant change to the, to the, to the apartment. You got two, you gotta.
I agree. And I think what we will defer, if the board is gonna visit the property, uh, the question of the actual parking layout and which parking plan Mr. Derek wants to use, and we can address the snow removal issue. Uh, I think I read in something that there's an agreement between the butter regarding storing snow on a property. You know, that will be discussed also, because that's not in perpetuity, as the butter ownership could change and not have the same welcoming attitude. But that we will discuss when we visit the property, if we do go. So does anyone else have any questions at this point? Of Mr. Kuritsky or Mr. Derek? I seem to have lost him. I do have a phone here. So that's probably him, but we're having communication difficulty. So David or Michael?
No, I don't have any more questions.
Give me one, one minute, Ray.
Can the people on the phone check by doing star six to make sure they're unmuted on their phones? They have to press star six.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm gonna pass the phone over to Ed.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Very clearly now, Mr. Derek.
Much better, Ed.
I have two parking plans here. Either one can go. I was just gonna wait. It was up to you guys. Snow removal is being done by ARG landscaping in Princeton. They're gonna remove the snow, take care of the property, so there won't be any snow left on, in the parking lot. I have frontage on Osgood Street. Turn it down. And Vernon Street, that's on street parking, I know, but it's still parking. I got spots for two, possibly three parking spots in the front. Um, I'm gonna be putting retaining wall up against, uh, if you're facing Osgood Street from the front of house, it's gonna be to the right. I have to do that. I've got a wall caving in. If I do get these units, I can stack a couple parking spots here, so I have a lot of options. I just not gonna follow through with any, obviously, if I don't get this permit. If I do, I definitely have enough options to do it. I also have a one-car garage, twelve by twenty-seven, that can be used as a parking space. I didn't hear that come up in the meeting. I sent pictures of parking lot with white lines in it, show eight across the back, some across the front. I don't know if anybody got that.
Yeah, I see.
And you're definitely welcome to come to the site. I'd be more than happy to have you up there and walk around and hear your opinion on it. That's, that's no problem either, bud.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Mr. Ante has a question, I believe. David?
Yep. Uh, Ed, if you're gonna use those three spots in the front, or two spots in the front, uh, how are you gonna handle the surface water? Because you're definitely gonna be changing the flow of the water when you remove all the soil, or if you're gonna blacktop it, so.
Yep, the front.
So there's gonna be.
Now, it's already pitched back to the road. I've got a lot of backup with my phone here, so we're having a hard time. But the, the front yard is pitched back to the road as it is already. So it's just gonna follow the same incline as it is. Won't be digging it out, it won't be digging down.
So are you gonna put two cars there or three?
Two, if I have to. I really don't wanna put any there if I can get other parking. I mean, it's, I just landscaped the whole front yard and just because of aesthetics, I'd rather not, but if I have to.
Well, I'm just saying you have no measurements there, so we don't know how far it's gonna be from the side boundary, how far it'll be from the road.
Did you, I sent the plot, I thought I sent the plot plan in with all my stuff.
It's, it's not on there. I got it right here. There's no measurements.
There was one that, is that the one, are you talking about the one that we received today? Have you seen that one, Dave?
I thought I dropped him off a couple of weeks ago.
I just got one. I got some new ones today.
Um, no, it's something I just wrote up. I, I didn't know how this meeting was gonna go, who I was talking to, who needed the information, so I just kinda sent that letter last night to everybody could review it.
I did send all the attachments that I got through last week that Mr. Derek did drop up. I did email them all to, to you, so you would've got them via email of, um, all the other plot plans that was, that was brought forward to us.
Yeah, I did receive via email, but I wasn't clear on some of the parking, but I figure we can address that if we go to the site and look at that. Um, I do, Mr. Derek, I have a question, uh, because Mr. Kuritsky mentioned lighting on the outside. Does any outside lighting exist now to light up the parking area?
Yes. The whole parking lot's lit up. All three porches, I have three covered porches, they're lit up. All three stairways on interior are lit by timers or they're constantly on.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Michael, any questions from you?
No, I, I don't think anything more can be answered. I think we need to, to visit the site.
Okay, David, I give you an opportunity if you have any other questions.
Well, I just would like the applicant to decide which parking plan, so when we go to visit, we'll be able to kinda know what to evaluate for parking.
Well, you know, I, I agree with you, but I would like to give him the opportunity to think more about it, which one he wants. And I would ask this, if we are going to view the property, uh, Mr. Derek, if you could somehow outline your parking spaces. I mean, you don't have to paint your driveways. You can use box at the beginning and so we can mark off which spaces, where they're gonna be located, and then we'll ultimately know which parking plan you're going to use. And then we'll evaluate that. Is that okay?
Sure, sure.
Okay. Anything else from anyone? Nothing.
Not at, not at this time for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, then let me.
So is there anything else you're gonna wanna see when you come up, come over, or just the parking?
Uh, I'm interested in the parking.
I'd like to go see the inside.
Well, I'm not sure if because he just wants to add to, and as long as there's, uh, if there's building codes, et cetera, they have to be applied, I mean,
Okay.
adhered to, and Mr. Gene will take care of that. And now.
I'd be glad, I'd be glad to show you where the units are going, the areas.
Okay.
They're unoccupied.
All right, now, so let me ask, I'm gonna move it forward. Any, anything else, David?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so are there any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application?
I don't think I have anything right now, Mr. Chairman. I may, I may join you at the site visit, but I don't think I have anything right now.
Okay, thank you. Are there any butters to the property present, and that's either on Zoom or on telephone that has a question or would like to make a statement or comment? I'll ask it again. Anybody, any butters to the property present, either via Zoom or on the telephone that would like to make a comment or ask a question? No response for the record? None. Other, is there anyone on telephone or Zoom that's in opposition to this application? Is there anyone on Zoom or telephone that is in opposition to this application? No response for the record? No opposition? Okay, members of the board, David and Michael, I'll just ask last if you have any questions or comments?
No.
No.
Michael?
No, no, no questions.
David?
No questions.
Okay, members of the board, okay with scheduling a meeting to view the property, so Mr. Derek can show us how he's planning his layout of parking and plan he plans to use? And, you know, I don't know if anything else will come up, but I think those are the issues we really wanna look at at this point. Everybody okay with that? David, Michael?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Kuritsky? You okay with that?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I'm sure Mr. Derek's okay with that.
Yes.
All right, so what we'll do is have our administrative assistant, Rachel, contact Mr. Kuritsky if that's the appropriate person to schedule a viewing. And we will practice social distancing and, uh, you know, we'll do it according to oil and get it done. Okay?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the board.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you. And then I'll just, uh, we're gonna move forward. I'll leave this meeting open at this point, uh, for Mr. Derek. And I'm gonna move on to the second case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so if you wanna sign off or leave the meeting, Mr. Derek and Mr. Kuritsky, you may, or you may stay on and listen.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I know.
Okay. Okay, just if, uh, next up, I'm gonna give me a minute so I can just put my papers back in order.
Raising your hand and stuff. Okay. If you wanted to chat, you just gotta type it in.
If you have a question or no answer, please raise your hand so I can acknowledge you, and it won't be interfering if someone else is speaking at the same time. Okay, the next case before this board, case two oh, two oh, dash, oh, three, dash, oh, two. Pranav Kumar Patel. Your application to operate a smoke bar at four oh, five, a four ninety-seven, dash, five oh, five, Chestnut Street, Gardner Mas, parcel ID R twenty-two, dash, twenty-three, dash, thirteen, located in the commercial two zoning district C two, is denied, is, does not comply with chapter six seventy-five, dash, four, ten, A of the city code of gardener. The use is not listed in our table of uses, such as there is no guidance to protect the interest of the city or yourself. Paragraph six seventy-five, dash, four, ten, scheduled, scheduled permitted uses. A, no building or structure shall be erected or used, and no premises shall be used except as set forth in the table of use regulations included at the end of this chapter. So, Mr. Patel, agent or attorney?
So I'm gonna represent a case by myself, but we have a Tom Rubel with me. He's our property agent. He gonna help us on, uh, help us on any question.
No, it's yours, Mr. You please state your name and address for the record first.
Oh, so my name is Pranav Kumar Patel, and my address is two zero eight Lawrence Street, Gardner, Massachusetts, zero, one, four, four, zero.
Okay, you may present your case.
So we, this is a first kind of the smoke bar, and Gardner doesn't have any rules, regulations, so the application denied, and it's gonna present to the board. And like, I have, I'm ready to ask you the question, whatever I know, based on my knowledge. So the parking spaces, like a twenty-two parking spaces, we got in a building. Right now, there was a one unit in use with the CPS club, and all of the units are empty. That's we gonna try to use as a smoke bar.
Okay. Well, is that your presentation? If you, if you saw the prior, well, you listened to the prior case. They had nine items under a special permit to address. Uh, since this use is not within our table of uses, it does not guide us to whether it needs to be a special permit or a variance, and a variance has three conditions that must be addressed. So based on that, we have no guidelines, and I think that's why you were denied by Mr. Gene, because it's not in the table of uses.
Yes, sir.
So if you, do you have any more you wanna add to that, other than I'm gonna, I will open it up to my board members to ask any questions, should they have it?
Please.
Okay, are you all set on your presentation at this point?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, David or Michael, hand up if you do have a question of Mr. Patel, and I'll recognize you. Okay, no hands up at this point. I think, Mr. Patel, the issue is, and I think it was clearly on the outline, under six seventy-five, four, ten, any of these uses must be within the table of uses. As Mr. Gene put it, I think, uh, very appropriately, there's no guidelines to protect the city, its citizens, your patrons, or yourself regarding parking requirements, or if anything else within the building is required, and that's under the gardener zoning ordinance at this point. That's under. and that's under the Gardner zoning ordinance at this point, that's under four ten. And if you just bear with me, I do have a couple others I want to go to. Okay, back here. And I think, um, you know, it talks about this being an appeal, it's an administrative appeal, which we interpret as you're just questioning the decision of the building inspector uh, based on the information he has. And unfortunately, the information he has is the same information that we look at going forward. So we do not have any guidelines or guidance at all on how to address a smoking bar in the city of Gardner under our present ordinance. So, I mean, we cannot address how many, like I said, one moment, sir, uh, we cannot address how many cars are needed, any, uh, health regulations required on Board of Health, um, any other safety conditions required by the fire department or other departments within the city. Uh, so that's what we're looking at here right now, because it's very little information available for this use. Now I'll acknowledge the gentleman in the red shirt who had his hand up.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman.
State your name.
My understanding, my, um, sorry, uh, my name is Tom, Tom Rubel. I'm with Keller Williams North Central. We're here more as, um, offering guidance, not representation, because I know the the building. Uh, so Mr. Patel asked me to come and answer any questions you might have. Um, in my opinion, the reason for this meeting, um, and I'm hoping Roland Jean will, um, confirm is that it is unknown territory, and we're trying to find some guidelines to allow this use in the city, whether it be under adult entertainment or something. You had mentioned a variance, we don't know what those conditions would be to get a variance. It is a long established building, it is a commercial building, there are no residential, um, butters, you've got a pizza parlor and an intersection on one side, get a large parking lot and a Chinese restaurant in their parking lot on the other side. Um, you've got a hot dog stand and a cafe across the street, and behind you, you have Pan Am Railroad and the Martin's Service Center. So I guess what we're trying to do is, is see if we can break new ground, try to get an idea of what can be done and if that use would be allowed.
Okay, Mr. Rubel, thank you. Um, first of all, I'll say, I know in the application, there was a statement about this being grandfathered. If a grand, if a lot's gonna, if the use is gonna be grandfathered, it must commence within two years after the vacancy occurred. But it also must be similar in the uses that were there prior. So in other words, you had a tanning salon, you had a small restaurant, uh, the Telegram Gazette had an office in there at one time. So if those were the uses being proposed by Mr. Patel, that's a different approach, and that approach is the grandfathering. Uh, a smoking parlor is not, I think, at least in our opinion, or Mr. Jean's opinion, a similar use to anything that was there first. Now, my second comment, as you said, you're breaking new ground, and you'd like to see standards set, something like that. It is not under the jurisdiction or the purview of the zoning board to establish those conditions. It's really either under the applicant working with legal counsel or working with the building commissioner's office, but the board does not set standards, et cetera, uh, because of the interaction of so many departments and what's really needed to be, so the full use and activity of a smoking bar really is, I believe, the responsibility of the applicant to lay it out before all the departments that may be impacted, et cetera, and determine if it is an appropriate use in that zone, and you know, that takes some legal work, and then it takes work to get it into our ordinance and publications through the, uh, community development planning, the city council. So in my, I guess to recap that, we do not have the authority, excuse me, to set the standards or whatever that has to happen, that is not our requirement to do that. Mr. Rubel, go ahead.
Um, I'm not aware, of course, I didn't fill out the application, but I just looked at Mr. Patel, we're not aware of any reference to grandfathering, there's nothing to grandfather, the building's been almost vacant with the exception of one tenant for a good part of two years, there was another tenant in there, uh, another social club that they left about twelve, fourteen months ago. I think the major concern seemed to be the parking in the back, and Mr. Jean was concerned about granting something, allowing parking spaces where people would be going onto another, uh, the butters land, which happens to be in a full of Boston Main Railroad, is actually a right of way, not a grandfather, but there is a right of way uh, built in the deed, and that runs with the land, and it goes both ways. So technically, if someone were to back onto a portion of the railroad, not the beds, just the the gravel, um, it's probably about fifty, sixty feet of gravel before the tracks. If they were back two or three feet onto that, there wouldn't be a trespass, because there is a right of way in place. I don't know anything about a grandfathering clause, because I, I, I know that there's nothing there to be grandfathered.
So really, that's why we use, okay.
Mr. Patel, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so depending on the parking question, that's why I use those for like a grandfathering, because right of way is on the deed, that's what we try to explain, like it is right there, and it was running from the backside. That's why probably I put the grandfather word. Now, connecting to the Board of Health Department for smoke bar, there was a Joanne, she is handling those areas for opening a smoke bar. And as for her, everything is permitted from Board of Health side. So I go to the Board of Health, and I present my case there, and she's directed to me, Joanne, and Joanne says you can do it. So I got yes from Joanne Helmut, she is the, whatever you can say, topical controller for, uh, the Board of Health side.
Okay, okay. Well, I think, you know, I'm not sure, we have not had any communications with the Board of Health, we don't know what's going on there. But the issue is, it's more than the Board of Health, Mr. Rubel, you addressed an issue with parking. Sure, parking is an issue we can look at, but I guess the question I would ask is for your type of use, how many parking spaces are required? The ordinance does not state that, we have no guidelines, uh, and we can't base it on somebody feels that you know, parking spaces for twenty five cars or whatever number is adequate. That is not what we work from, we work from the facts and the ordinance. And as I stated early, and I think as Mr. Jean stated clearly, we have no guidelines in the ordinance at this point in time. So I, I, I just, I believe, and this is the opinion of myself, and I'm not saying, talking for my other board members. I think additional work needs to be done on Mr. Patel's part of getting many players in that involved here, because it's a new, I'll call it a new venture within the city of Gardner, under our current zoning ordinance. Now, if existing ordinance in other communities are out there, please research them, please look at them, and then look at considering submitting them to the proper department, uh, for him, have them reviewed, look at its impact on the city of Gardner, its citizens and yourself, and they will develop a plan, whether it's acceptable or not, and to include it in our table of uses, but I just keep heading back to our table of uses provides us no guidance on protection for you, your patrons, or the city's citizens of Gardner. I guess that's just my sort of my comment that I'd like to leave with you. And Mr. Patel, oh, there you are. Uh, so that's really my comment, Mr. Rubel, I'm not sure if you agree or understand, but this is what the board has to look at, and it's almost like a grading system in school with, if we don't have anything, how can we grade you? You know? That's what we have to look at. Yes, Mr. Rubel?
So if I understand, um, if we, if Mr. Patel does some work, possibly, uh, find some neighboring communities or communities in the Commonwealth that do all of this use, and we can come back to ZBA, or should we go to to Roland?
Great question. Mr. Patel can search out all the communities in the Commonwealth of Mass. I mean, if you want to go beyond Mass, I don't know, that's up to you. But you would not come directly back to us. You, I would say, then start beginning work with the, uh, community development and planning, would put a package together, which ultimately needs to go before the city council for approval, and then that would be inclusion into the ordinance or modification of the ordinance at that point in time. At that point in time, then the, the zoning board of appeals upon, upon appropriate submission by Mr. Patel for an application, whether it's going to be for a variance or special permit, then the board has some documentation, et cetera, to review, but at this point, we have no criteria to look at and evaluate this. So that's, I guess, trying to put in a nutshell, that's what it is. Mr. Patel?
Yes, sir. So before I put this application, I visited a couple, uh, smoke bar in Worcester, it's, it's in Massachusetts, there were three or four right there. But now I'm understanding what kind of information I should collect from there, like a pictures, locations, timings, hours, what, what the information normally you looking for.
Well, you're asking, or at this point, you're asking only board to set the criteria for the conditions you need to look at. And the board will not supply the conditions or the criteria, because you know, that means we're make, sort of making a decision, and if you meet them, we sort of have to move forward with it, because those are the conditions we submitted. What you need to work with is those other communities, other zoning boards, if they have ordinances that have that, look at it, and then determine what you want to do, and then put your package together, you need maybe to have conversations with the Board of Health, the Fire Department, Police Department, uh, as many times, a lot of these applications come in, and if I'm correct, Rachel, there's either seven or ten plans or something that come in and submitted to those departments for review and comment before it comes to the zoning board.
Yes.
So that's my comment to your question, Mr. Rubel, you're on.
I, I was just, I'd like to address, Mr. Patel, what you should do is go look at the bylaws of the city of Worcester, and how they have addressed and set up this, and then is, um, this local fund is saying, you know, go talk to the police chief, feel for what he thinks the fire department, if already talked to the Board of Health, you go to community development, and see if they think that that might be an asset, and if they have any things that they can do to help guide you.
Yep.
And they're putting together a proposal that you could put in front of people, say, okay, yeah, we, uh, we could be open to this, okay, and then try to get your permit, it'll be denied, we'll go back to the ZBA, okay, correct?
All right, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a suggestion here. Since you did put this application in, the board has an obligation to either approve your application or decline it. If it is declined under the ordinance, you'd not be able to apply for two years. If you choose to withdraw your application and withdraw without prejudice, then if you do collate all your data and information, then you have an opportunity to present before the board again. Those are your two options, and then choice is yours of which one you want. You can withdraw without prejudice, submit a letter for withdrawal without requesting without prejudice, and at its next meeting, the board will review that letter and vote on that letter. Uh, if you choose to continue to go forward, then the board will review the information it has and will make its decision from there. So the choice is yours, uh, Mr. Rubel, you can provide guidance to him if you wish, but you know, the decision is Mr.
I was. So I will withdraw it this time, and I will come back with more information as you suggested.
Okay, Mr. Patel, I asked you, I asked you to submit a letter to the zoning board. Uh, we have it on record that you're requesting a withdrawal without prejudice, am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, then you follow up with a letter tomorrow to, uh, Rachel and our department stating that you choose to withdraw your application without prejudice. And like I said, that will be submitted at our next meeting to be voted on to accept or deny your, your letter, but uh, those are your two options, if that's your choice, fine, please just submit that to Rachel, uh, tomorrow in our office, and then we'll move forward from there. Is that your decision, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, board members?
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Rubel, David or Mike, you have any comments of what I've said, or I've said to Mr. Patel, that I may have missed something?
I'm good.
Well done, Ray. Good, good explanation.
You're all set, Michael, you're all set?
All set.
Okay, I'll just ask, I want to just ask, if any representative of the city want to speak regarding, uh, this application and what I just said to Mr. Patel, if you have anything to add to that?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Jean. Okay, um, let's see, is there anything further to discuss before the board? I think, Rachel, we do have some minutes to look at. But what I want to do, uh, since, um, Mr. Derek is gone, Mr. Patel, uh, I want to, uh, close the meeting portion for the two cases but, uh, from the public hearing, and leave open just so we can review our minutes and approve from the prior month.
Mr. Chairman, are you gonna pick a date for a visit?
Uh.
You're gonna wait?
I think, uh, Mr. Derek is gonna submit, but I think Rachel can, uh, actually contact Mr. Karitsky. And what does your schedule look like, David and Michael, if I may ask?
Oh.
Yeah.
The, the rest of this week won't be good for me, I'll be away.
Oh.
Hey, David, what's your schedule look like next week?
Fine and, uh.
Thank you.
I can go during the day.
All right, well, we have to do, Mr. Derek, though, what he might be available for too at the same time. Wait, any day good next week, David, for you?
Yes.
Michael?
Um, most any day next week.
You said most, so that means there's one that's not.
Well, I have a, I have a maybe a dentist checkup, but I don't think he's open yet, so.
Right, well.
I'm, I'm probably good anytime.
Thank you, Rachel.
I'm a doctor, I'll look at you.
Rachel, will you please?
I will, uh, yeah, I'll, I'll reach out, go, um, George and Derek tomorrow, and find out what works for them.
I suggest you submit Plan A and B, so everybody has a choice.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, um, would you like to please, uh, do I hear a motion of you all, you all? You have had an opportunity to read the minutes as Rachel submitted them to us from the prior meeting. Do you have any corrections or comments to update? Can I hear none? But David?
No.
I'm not, I'm not on that, Ray. Randy is.
Okay, sorry, Randy? Did you have?
I have no, I have no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Michael?
No comment.
Thank you. Then do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the prior month or meeting?
So moved. Seconded.
Okay, any discussion? None, all in favor, I'll call, roll call, Michael?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Ray, yes. Okay, minutes approved.
That was for June sixteenth meeting.
That is correct. Uh, any for them, uh, uh, business before the board at this point?
Are we, um, next meeting, are we, when is that scheduled, and we, what two cases are we hearing?
Okay, Rachel?
We scheduled for the twenty first, it'll be at six P M., and we are looking at, uh,
Woodford and, Woodford and.
Yeah, Andy Woodford for a construction yard on Seventy Four Sand, and then we have, um, Keith Pickett, which is Ninety Six Arcadia Road for building a single family, but there's a frontage.
That is a front setback issue, I believe.
Yep.
Any other questions, uh, Michael, David?
Ray, so for the meeting on, it's the twenty third, Rachel?
Twenty first.
Twenty first, so are you gonna do the? Twenty first. So are you gonna do the, uh, two cases that we talked about? Uh, today first, or are you gonna do them at the end? First?
I would like.
Way you wanna do it, right? Probably at the end, so we can get the cases that are scheduled first.
Okay, I agree with you. I don't think there'll, uh. Be major issues on the other cases coming up. They're not, they don't look that complex. Straightforward, we can go through. And then after that, we'll take care of the two cases. Yes, Randy?
I think you continued the hearing for the Vernon Street, so that one would be actually the first you would hear on the twenty first.
That's correct. And Mr. Patel is gonna withdraw. For, for the record in the letter he'll submit.
Yeah.
Mr. Jean?
Right, does that continued hearing need to be posted on the agenda?
I would post it, you know, since we're doing Zoom and everything, uh, let's just keep everything flowing through the, the, um. Notice in the paper and yes, sir, Mr. Jean.
Agenda for the twenty first meeting has already been posted.
Yes.
I think we need to, to put that out for the next meeting.
I think.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would suggest actually pushing it out to the August meeting. Um.
Randy?
I don't believe, I, I think I remember, um, you do not have to re-advertise this continuance. As long as it, the continuance is set at the public hearing. Doesn't even have to be necessarily have to be advertised.
And that is.
Very, you can verify that, but I think that's how it goes.
And I believe you're correct, Mr. Hagland, because I think prior we would. I think Mr. Flick's office gave us that guideline at one time. Let's take a look at that. If we contacted John's office tomorrow. And if he confirms that, then we'll, no need to publish it. We'll put it in. If, if it is, then Rachel will move it out to August.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Jean, Mr. Antaya. Mr. Gary. Mr. Hagland, any other comments at this point?
No.
None here, so.
Is there, is there an August meeting scheduled yet? Are there applications out there that are coming in, you know?
As it stands, we have two applications for August eighteenth. And there is another one in the pipeline right now, but I haven't had it finalized. But we do have, um, there are two cases for August.
Okay.
Okay, so we technically have four more cases right now in the pipeline.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, then, uh, do I, between Mr. Gary and Mr. Antaya, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Tuck it.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Michael?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Uh, Ray? Yes, uh, meeting adjourned at seven twelve.